January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five. Lloyd, will you do roll call for me?
Here.
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 All right. All right. Uh, first call uh is public uh community. Public commitment. The park and recreation board will commit from commence from the public. Those wishing to speak must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. And speaker may speak on any topic whether on the agenda or not. The park and recreation board cannot act upon discussion issue raised or might make any decision at this time. Speaker under the citizen comment shall observe a three minute time limit. Inquiries regarding matters not listed on the agenda may be referred to staff for research and or possible future action by the board. Now working session, uh A work session reports. First discussion is on adding additional restroom to Sonora Park. Now Christian.
So regarding that uh additional restroom on Sonora Park, I'm gonna me be meeting with our city manager on Thursday. And I'm gonna bring that forward to him. And based on what he says, if we need to take it to council, then we go to council. But for right now, I'll be meeting him on Thursday and we discuss that. I know it's gonna be involve a lot of work because we have a sewer line at the back by the creek and there's one on the uh New Hope Road. What we need to decide if we're gonna put one in is where are we gonna locate that restroom? And I'm thinking that the best place would be by the pavilion. Somewhere in the back where it's close to people to get to the restroom instead of having to go all the way up back to the parking lot. And I know it's gonna involve a lot of money. We'll have to do some shoot some grade and see how it runs out. But for right now, I'll discuss that with him and see which direction he wants to go. I don't know if he might just wanna put a potty John. I don't know. I don't like that. But I don't know. Nobody likes that, especially women, but and kids especially as well, so.
I have question. How how many do we currently have? We do we only have one?
We have two for the women and one for the men on on the restroom at the front. So there's two stall for women, one stall for men plus the urinal. And I get it. It's kind of ways to walk from the pavilion to the restroom. And be the nice if we could have one closer to the pavilion. So we just need to figure out where we could put it that would be cost effective.
And so the new restroom, will it be for just women? Men or will it be like a family where women can bring the children?
I think it be could to be um the cheapest way to make it a unisex, you know, a family. One stall that everybody could use. Then again, you know, people may not like that because they have to wait in line. If somebody is there, then we could have two stalls. But I'll discuss that with the city manager and see how it pans out with him. And then we could put pen to paper and see what it's gonna cost if that's something that he wants to pursue. And basically for the similar stuff like for the upgrade to the pavilion, what you have in mind, you want to see something repainted or?
Well, maybe uh yes, maybe repainted, but also, you know, look additive. We want we want people when they come to the park, if they wanna have a barbecue, have a pig, something, some kind of grill or something added on to the pavilion. Where people can you can grill on, 'cause I mean, I've been a lot of parks. And a lot of them have fireplace grills added on to the pavilion. Where people can grill, they can cook out, but you can still and I've been in some parks where they have a P A system that people can hook up into. And though and but you may and they rent them out, but they stay rented. Yeah. Because the pav- it is a moneymaker. The pavilion is if you got a right, if you have the right pavilion, especially sitting right there by the pond and you have the right stuff and the right equipment, it will make the park, the city some money. People will come use it 'cause people will come from around 'cause if they can't get the one that there, well, Canada's close. Right, right. We can't get to Canada.
Yeah, so I could bring that up as well for.
So you're basically talking about uh installing a grill and then installing electrical outlets where people can.
It already have, it already has electrical outlets there.
So what do you mean by P A system? Speakers?
Some of part, yes. Well, they can bring like their own little karaoke machine, but they can plug in. So that way speaking system stuff is already there, but they can bring out karaoke machine or whatever. They can plug people who's doing speaking out there or holding like you had that one event. People hold an event. Well, if you bring your own karaoke, when you plug into it, well, the speakers are already there. So now you do your own karaoke machine, you talking through the speakers already at the pavilion. So people is hearing you. If you got an event going on, like when they do the kid fish or bark in the park, whoever's leading, they can be at the pavilion and giving the direction.
The message, I mean, there's the voice will project.
From my experience, the pavilion here speakers that stay broken. So they may not, you know, agree to that. These stay broken.
I know we have the our PD runs around and drive around, but the gates are locked at ten o'clock. But I don't know if they would think we'll have to really secure it, otherwise people gonna walk away with it. But it don't hurt to try. What other upgrades you looking at for the pavilion? Is there any other kind of upgrades you looking?
Just uh maybe uh maybe, you know, different color, maybe make it a little brighter. But right now it's it's like it blends. Really good.
Repaint.
Make it a little bright, make something where it stands out.
Yeah, we could. They approve it. We could repaint that in house. We have staff who could do that. Just come up with a color.
I see that might be something, you know, maybe match that. Yeah, it is maybe, you know.
Yeah, we could paint the railings with one color and paint the roof with one color. Put the.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Colorful.
Right. Well, there's nothing wrong with, you know, make it's, you know, you at the park is outside. Make it colorful. Make people, you wanna draw people to it. So, yeah.
I mean, I guess we could look at palettes. I don't know if some making it like the same colors of the equipment. You don't want it to look like a amusement, but like a a children's playground. But possibly just picking one color from the equipment. That way it'll coordinate. You know, one or two colors, but not the exact same color. I agree. It needs, you know, it's something that stands out.
Okay, I'll discuss those with him. And I'll let you know at the next staff meeting or probably I could shoot you a email. All right, what else?
All right, uh discussion and request for clarification on items listed on the agenda. Like the agenda, I guess I wasn't really present when they did the one for the uh the pickleball courts, the the disc. So what's what's going on with that?
Those thing are on hold because um our city managers walk into upgrade their ballpark. So once we ballpark is upgraded, his plan is to put the pickleball at the ballpark. You know, we had a plan to put the pickleball up front at Sonora. No, the plan is to put it at the back.
So is he, is the city manager doing away with the baseball?
No, all those thing needs to be upgraded. So right now it's on hold waiting to be upgraded. But we have funding for it, but I don't think the funding is sufficient to do what we want to do. Because he's partnering with the Y M C A and they have some plans that they think they could work with us to get that um ballpark up to the standard it should be.
Okay, so there's what? There there two fields, right? Three, yeah, three fields back there. Okay, now if you gonna put the one, since it's on hold, but we discussing, if you putting the pickleball in the back, where at the back are you putting it? Are you gonna lose the park?
No, when I say the back, it's gonna be where the baseball, I mean, the ball field is gonna be at. So it's gonna be on one side because we looking to um purchase that piece of land that's, I don't know if it's the west side. You know, when you're entering that open land on the left, he's looking to purchase that so we could um have the pickleball and have parking because right now there's no parking per se.
Yeah, there's really no parking back there.
So that's in limbo right now. Once you could get a deal on that, they're gonna move forward.
Yes, and then what about the disc golf? They wanted to move from to an eighteen hole so they could play.
I spoke with uh what's his name, council member Jeff, kinda he kinda runs that frisbee stuff, whatever they call it. And he said there's no space and he don't think we gonna make it with the eighteen hole. He wants to keep it as is.
Yeah, there's no space for an eighteen hole. We'll move on. Reports and announcements. In addition to any items below the park and recreation board, the preceding officer and or staff may give or receive reports regarding items of community interest included but not limited to recognition of official, citizen staff and department. Information regarding holiday schedule and upcoming and attended events. Information regarding holiday schedule and upcoming and attended events.
I don't have any updates. I know we talked about in the last meeting that, uh, Christian suggested that we make a checklist of, uh, things that we feel would be beneficial to the community. So I don't know who, if we, anybody started on the checklist or not. But you're still, you're still waiting on that, right?
I think that would be a good starting point for the board, you know? You could sit down home and think of, hmm, what should we want? What you think the people gonna like, and you just write it down. You all put your heads together at next time and get me that list and then I could move forward with that to.
City manager.
Right, so I think we need to discuss how we're going to go about obtaining that information from citizens. Like are we gonna go door to door? Are we gonna send out emails? Like how are we gonna get the information?
You know, do some, um, Googling and research some stuff and see what other parks have, what other people, cities like, what their citizens ask for and what they get and use the same thing.
Okay.
You know?
I thought maybe you wanted something that was like more local, like personable to like Kennebys. But I mean, but yeah, we can.
It's gonna all be the same as for a city anyways and for the community, so they're all gonna be the same. To some extent, you know, we don't have a big city and we don't have the funding, but you know, we could do whatever we can, be it small, but
Okay.
we'll be similar to other big cities.
Yeah, I mean, that would be easier.
But I don't know, let, think about when you, you go on a different part, think about what you see there. You have an event, you see a different part.
Well, that's one of the things I see, one, you know, the things that you mentioned today, the the grill, um, the speaker system.
Yeah, stuff like those.
Yeah.
Those are the stuff that I think we should be looking at.
Yeah, everything else.
I mean.
We already have.
Those, the parts I've been to, when they have the speaker grill, they have them in cages. So they don't leave them out, they put them in cages. So if somebody do wanna get it, they gotta cut. Yeah, you bringing, you bringing tools to come and snatch it. So they do put them behind cage. So it's not, it's a security measure, so it's not out in the open. And they're weather resistant. And they keep them pretty high up to where, again, if you wanna come get it, you gonna bring a ladder and stuff to come and get it.
Do we have cameras at all?
Not yet, not yet.
That may be something.
That's that's coming because we started in town center here, city hall. We install cameras, so they're kinda expanding out.
Cameras. That may be something, especially if you, if you, if you plan on adding speaker system and then you have the motion sensor cameras, so everything will be.
Yeah, no, we're gonna be getting light lighting system into the park as well, so.
Just when asked about a lighting system.
Yeah, that's that's in the work. In fact, the contractor who we hired, I think he been out sick, so once he start feeling well, it's gonna be back up. You know, we have the gate in already, so the lights are coming. And I know we talk about, um, redoing the signage at front. That's happening as well.
Okay.
That's happening? Okay, good.
The same contractor will be doing that.
Okay, now, I noticed you said the park is closed at ten.
Yeah.
So who's closing the gate?
It's automatic. It's time at ten o'clock it closes.
Okay.
And it opens at six, I believe.
Okay, that's nice. But there's no gate on the backside.
Well, the only way to get in from the backside, you have to be by foot.
Well, that's why, but still.
Yeah, but once we do the, um, when we do the 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 ball field, all that's gonna change.
Do we have grills at any of, we don't have grills at any of our parks, right?
There used to be.
Used to be. But they don't have none now, no.
'Cause if you think think about Sonora, I mean, if it's, if that's what something we plan to do, I think it would be beneficial to have more than one, 'cause Sonora is so big. And then that way you could have really community, community cookouts with more than one grill. But yeah, I think so, I think, you know, it would be good to have two, two there. Even if we don't have any anywhere else, you can have two there, 'cause they'll know that's the place to go to.
Yeah.
And it would be a moneymaker for the city, 'cause you could rent.
I mean, granted, most people, I know, they carry their homes away, so if I'm going to park, I'm taking my home, but for those who, the weekend and whatnot, yeah, that that'd be something great. I mean, again, we getting people to the park. We want something for every age. But even though for for those of us who fifty and think we five, we still want toys. We still wanna go to park and play. We want, you know, stuff for us like you have a horseshoe out there. Okay, well, it's a horseshoe, but there's nothing, nothing there, it's not even fixed. It's like, it's broken down, so are we, is it something that the city wants to keep? Or are they gonna take it out of there?
Yeah, like I said, you know, those are the kind of stuff that you wanna put in your checklist that you wanna see. You know, what you think. Even if personally, what you think you would like to have, what you are thinking more than likely, somebody else is thinking, man, I wish they had that. You know, so whatever you are thinking, somebody else is thinking the same thing as well. If they don't care, I don't care, but if you put those stuff together, then we could move forward with it and see how the city wants to go.
So we're gonna have that by the next meeting?
Yeah, just, uh, just write down on paper.
Yeah, yeah, it don't have to be anything fancy.
Yeah.
Then I could put it together.
Yeah. I mean, I want, I want everybody to put something that they wanna see in the park. 'Cause I want all of us to enjoy the park. That's what it's there for, let's, uh, let's all of us get out and enjoy it. So if everybody can put something in there that they, it might get in, it might not, but still. Put something we really want. You really wanna see, you really wanna see.
Well, I think the two things you said, I mean, it will encompass everybody, all ages. If you put a grill, you know, everybody eats, you know, everybody has events and birthday parties and, um, celebrations, reunions, community events. And then with a P A system too, you know, people can have have classes, exercise classes on Saturday morning, different things. So I mean, those, I I haven't, really, I can't even think of anything else right now, but I, you know, those two things to me will encompass everything else, everything else we already have. We have a duck pond, walking trail.
Well, think about the bridge. I mean, let's, let's think about the bridge. I mean, 'cause what if the bridge was to go all the way across? Now you put a sit in there, 'cause I've been in, I've been in parks where they have a bridge, that bridge goes all the way across to the south, but they have, I've seen people that hold wedding because of the background. I've seen people on there taking pictures, why? Because of the background that it provides being in the middle of a pond.
Oh, you mean the bridge that's.
It's already there, yeah. I'm not extending. Not saying it's.
Extended to the other side of where the houses are?
Extend it to the other side of pond where you can walk, you can walk across it, or you can stand up on it, look out.
Yeah, I have to see that.
Yeah.
Well, that's it for the updates. Any other updates?
All right. Moving on, consent agenda. This matter have appeared on previous agenda requires little or no deliberation or consideration, routing, or minstros task. If discussing is desired, items may be removed from separate considerations.
Okay, I move that we approve the minutes from December tenth, twenty twenty four.
All right.
Motion, second motion.
Items from individuals, consideration, discussion, and or actions. Executive session, the Kennebys City Council reserves the right to meet an executive close session at any time during the meeting pursuant to the below cited section of the state, of the Texas government code. I'm visiting. And I, Corey Hines, are joining this meeting at seven fifteen P M, January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay.